All right, I would like to call the May 25th, 2021 Housing and Redevelopment Authority Meeting to order. First order of business is the call to order. Myra, can you take the roll call, please?
Beloga.
Here.
Uh, Hukim.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Thorson. I don't see, uh, Commissioner Thorsten, so, uh, but we do have a corner for people.
All right, okay, that's, that sounds great, thank you. Um, next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or, uh, questions about the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the May 25th, 2021 HRA Commission Agenda?
Commissioner Olson makes that motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. A motion by Commissioner Olson to approve the agenda, second by Commissioner Hukim. Um, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Beloga.
Hi.
Hukim.
Hi.
Lewis.
Hi.
Olson.
Hi.
Motion passed four to zero.
Thank you. Um, our next order of business, number three on the agenda, is the approval of the minutes from April 27th, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none. I'm sorry, yes, Commissioner Olson?
Um, I don't know, I don't have questions but comments about two items that are in there, if it's not all the time.
Yes, so that they can be amended, so that we can amend it if necessary.
Um, on, I think it's page two of the minutes at the bottom, uh, I'd asked a question about, um, how we interact with the city when it's, uh, an issue of TIF that we need to approve and needing to go through the Planning Commission and the City Council. And, um, I believe that, uh, that there's, there's open dialogue about how we do that to get clarity. Just wondering what the status of that is, or if at some point in the near future, we could, uh, get some kind of a response back from the Planning Commission and the City Council.
Okay, um, I think this might be a better, um, item for-
At the end of the meeting?
For the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Um, since it's more of a question.
Yep.
Okay, um, are there any other comments or additions to the amendments, or to the amendments, I'm sorry, to the minutes?
I mistakenly put Carla Peterson, our General Counsel, on the agenda, and I'll remove that.
All right, thank you. Okay, um, going back to number three, or number three approval of the minutes of, um, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Madam Chair, I approve, I've moved to approve the minutes as published.
Thank you, is there a second?
Olson, seconds.
Um, motion by Commissioner Beloga to approve the April 27th, 2021, 2021 HRA Commission Minute Meeting Minutes, um, second by Commissioner Olson. May we have the roll call vote, please?
Beloga.
Hi.
Hukim.
Hi.
Lewis.
Hi.
Olson.
Hi.
And Mark just informed me that he's trying to get into the meeting, I did admit him.
Okay, so he's, he's, all right.
But, um, the motion was carried four to zero.
All right, thanks, thank you. Um, item number four, organizational business, is there any organizational business this evening? Administrator Coleman?
There is no organizational business this evening.
All right, thank you. Um, moving on to item number five, new business, item 5.1, new payment standards for the Housing Choice Voucher, Section 8 Rent Assistance Program. May we have the staff report, please?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, uh, we at least, at least annually, uh, and sometimes a couple of times a year, bring forward to you for approval, new payment standards for the Section 8 Rent Assistance Program. Um, we are required to do, do it at least once a year, to take a look at it anyway, uh, and this, uh, this item tonight is, is really good news. HUD has published our budget, um, much earlier than they did in prior years. Sometimes we waited to July or August to figure out what our funding was going to be for the calendar year. Um, but this 2021 budget included an increase to the Section 8 Housing Assistance Payments of $453,000. So that's a pretty significant increase for us. Um, and right away, what we would like to seek approval for tonight is increasing our payment standards for the one and two-bedroom households, uh, that we serve on the program. In the chart below, apologize, it's a little, um, if it's not clear, but, um, we're increasing the one-bedroom payment standard to $1,000, that's a $50 increase per month. So that's a $50 increase in subsidy for that, uh, a one-bedroom voucher holder we received. Then we're increasing the two-bedroom by $45 to $1,225. Um, we anticipate also that as a result of this new funding, um, that we will be able to assist additional households off our waiting list. Um, right now, the, uh, well, I say in prior years, our budget did not support fully leasing the program, but this will help us get a little closer to that. Right now, we're at about 530 people leased out of the 551 that HUD says we can do, but they don't fund us at 551, um, given our market, and, um, but we're getting closer. And, so it's exciting, we issued, um, 20 new vouchers at the beginning of the year, and those folks are in the process of leasing up, and we hope to issue another 20 or so, probably in the fall. I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Hartman?
Madam Chair.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Beloga?
Brian, good evening.
Hello, Jack.
A couple of questions. Uh, one is, uh, that we've only increased the one and the two-bedroom. Um, so we're getting pretty close on the one-bedroom with the new, uh, uh, payment number. We'd be $54 less than the market, and, uh, about $53 less than that market on the two-bedroom. Yet, we're a couple hundred dollars off on the three and four bedrooms, and so on. Um, is it, uh, what's the rationale of just doing the increase to the, uh, one and two?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Beloga, thanks for that question. Uh, if the Commission remembers last fall, when the fair market rents went up so dramatically, um, we had to increase quite substantially every bedroom size, and especially the larger bedroom size, they went up substantially, and we, I can go back and get that information for you, I don't have it here at home, but, um, you know, we felt that, and those, and those new increases are still being implemented, so it occurs on the anniversary date after that, um, increase takes effect. So those took effect, I believe it was October 1st, so we're still implementing those large increases for those large, larger bedroom size vouchers. Um, but, um, we, we also felt like the ones and twos are further behind in the market than the larger bedroom size, and the ones and twos may comprise the majority of our program. Um, as you get higher in bedroom size, there's few and fewer families that are in those units, um, just because of the, typically who we serve on our programs are families that one and two bedrooms, and threes are creeping up there, uh, but anything above three bedrooms, there's very few of those, just a handful actually. And I don't think there's a six-bedroom unit anymore on the program, it used to be. So that's how we, how we came up with, uh, the increase to affect the ones and twos, to give them a extra little push.
Okay, uh, thank you for that. Uh, and I, I don't know that you'll have, uh, my follow-up question, but it's the number of people who were, uh, uh, doing in each of the categories?
Um, I may so, if you give me like two minutes, two seconds here, I have it in email, if I can get that it quick enough without wasting your time, I'll try to.
And, and if you can't, it's fine by me that, uh, we get it either by email or, um, you know, at the next meeting.
All right, I, I don't see it here, so I, I will get that information out to the Commission.
Okay.
Brian, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Are there any other questions for Brian? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the proposed payment standards for the Housing Choice Voucher, Section 8 Rent Assistance Program, effective for July 1st, 2021?
Commissioner Olson, uh, moves that motion that we, uh, increase according to the schedule we've been given.
Thank you, is there a second?
Beloga, second.
Thank you. Uh, it has been moved by Commissioner Olson to approve the proposed payment standards for the Housing Choice Voucher, Section 8 Rent Assistance Program, effective July 1st, 2021, second by Commissioner Beloga. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, um, Myra, could you do the roll call vote?
Beloga.
Hi.
Hukim.
Hi.
Lewis.
Hi.
Olson.
Hi.
Thorson.
Hi.
Make the record known also that, um, Commissioner Thorson joined the meeting at 5:36.
Welcome, Commissioner Thorson.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, folks.
Moving on, yes, thank you, Brian, moving on to item number six, discussion items, item 6.1, update on Civic Plaza reopening. Um, Administrator Coleman, I think this is probably your item.
Yes, thank you, Chair Lewis, good evening, Chair, members of the, of the board. So we have received communication about the opening of Civic Plaza. Um, and so with that, uh, communication came from executive leadership of the city, that offices will reopen for employees preferring to work on site, June 1. This is not a requirement of employees to return on site, it's for those that would like to return on site, they can do so as early as June 1. Um, the mask mandate that was in effect for, uh, the state, um, has been, uh, lifted, and so, uh, employees and others are able to not wear a mask if they choose not to, when at Civic Plaza. So reopening of the city offices to the public is slated for June 14th. So, uh, we are looking at, uh, reopening to the public, each department and their division, and we are reviewing, um, staffing, uh, because staff also has the opportunity to apply for a flexible work arrangement, um, which would be somewhat of a hybrid, uh, depending on work. Um, and this is still being fleshed out because there's all different jobs at the city of Bloomington, um, but they have the opportunity to apply, um, by July 30th of 2021. And so we are still waiting for that, um, updated, uh, form and/or policy to come out. Um, but as of right now, we will be reopening to the public June 14th. With that, um, there has not been an extension at the state for, um, continuing virtual meetings. So, um, as early as June 14th, we would need to, um, until I hear further, we would need to bring the Commission back in person. Um, because of the state laws, we do not have approval beyond, uh, the term of the pandemic or the executive order, which we will have to follow that as well, um, beyond that to continue virtual meetings. With that, there is discussion, I have, um, talked a little bit to staff, and then I did bring it up to executive leadership with the city, um, because it has been very nice to be able to video our meetings, um, and have the capability for residents and any other guests to attend or watch the meeting live. And as I understand, that was not an option previously, uh, and it comes down to the room in which we're holding the meetings in, as well as the available IT staff. And so that has not been fully, um, solved yet, but it is a goal to continue the accessibility for our, uh, residents and constituents in Bloomington to be able to attend our meetings and plug in and, and learn and ask questions. So I will take any questions or comments anyone has.
Are there questions for Administrator Coleman? We're, we're a quiet group this evening. Um, can, um, I'm going to just put a question, not so much to Administrator Coleman, just to the group. Um, I myself am kind of looking forward to live meetings again, I just want to, you know, want to find out if people are feeling comfortable with this move. Not, not that we probably have a lot to say about it, but it would be good to know.
Commissioner Olson, Madam Chair, uh-
Commissioner Olson.
Looks forward to, uh, to, uh, getting meetings, uh, face-to-face again. And, um, in my personal case, I've had, I had my second Pfizer on the 24th of March, and willing to wear masks whenever people, uh, are uncomfortable or somehow prefer to do that. Uh, so I'm, I'm looking forward to back to in-person.
All right, I think that, yeah, that's, that's also me, and I'm, I'm also comfortable wearing masks if people, you know, prefer that. So, yeah, I'm, I am looking forward to it. Um, are there any other questions for Administrator Coleman?
Um.
Yes, Commissioner Beloga?
Excuse me, uh, thank you, Sheriff. Um, I don't have a question of, uh, Administrator Coleman, but, uh, um, one of the things that I'm struggling with is, is, uh, I do have, uh, a severely compromised immune system. Uh, I am vaccinated, but, uh, one of the issues with, you know, we've all heard about, you know, the various, uh, uh, regimens that the, uh, various, uh, companies who produce the vaccine went through to get it approved. And 95% is really not applicable to people with, uh, immune compromised, uh, systems, because unfortunately, like, uh, some of the youth, uh, there is no data, uh, with respect to that group of, uh, people. So I am, uh, you know, normally I'd be very happy to be in the same room with everybody. Uh, I do have a lot of reservations, not because of who the group is, it, it's, you know, uh, it, it, it's just because of my personal situation, so, um, it, it's a concern for me.
All right, um, Administrator Coleman, has, has this question come up for other, um, staff people or, um, um, other Commission members?
Thank you, Chair Lewis and Commissioner Beloga. So, the question, when it comes for other staff members, we have, we have more leeway to-
That's true.
Be flexible. Um, as I understand it, Shane Ruddling is, um, does our legislative agenda and kind of plugs in, um, when I say our, I mean the city, but also HRA items, um, and kind of plugs in with the legislature, and there is, there was a proposal, and I'd have to follow back up with Shane, um, about being able to still be virtual, however, this statute does not, um, outline, um, medical conditions or existing conditions, it just states, it was, the proposal was about if someone wanted to attend a meeting virtually, what is the option? And a part of that option is, they have to be, it has to be a public meeting. So what that means is, if you are in another state, or another city, or in the current city, it has to be open for the public to come into that same space and attend the meeting with you, if they choose, and it has to be noticed. So the address, everything. Um, and so I, I know that the conversation is happening, happening, the issue is, it doesn't look like there will be a change passed by the legislature, the state legislature in any special session coming up, um, which is what puts us in limbo.
Right, uh, well, um, and this is, um, Chair Lewis again, if we, when we do go back in-person meetings, because it sounds like at this point, we will be doing that after June 14th, um, it would be my suggestion, and I would like to hear from the other Commissioners, that because, you know, we, we do have a member that, um, is a little uncomfortable, um, I think we should work, I think we should wear masks at our meetings, and I would suggest as much social distancing as we can do, you know, if it's a case of moving chairs or leaving a chair open between us, um, you know, it depends somewhat on the room we're in, but, um, at least to that, you know, that extent, that would be something that we could do to try to make people feel a little more comfortable. Um, I don't know what, what is other people's feelings about that?
So real quick, Chair Lewis?
Yes.
Um, I- Thank you. Social distancing, absolutely, it would be up to each individual regarding a mask, including guests.
Right.
I believe that as a Commission, you can vote for yourselves, but I do not believe that that rule can be extended, um-
Right.
Beyond yourselves.
Right, and I, and I understand that, but I would at least, I think as a Commission, um, you know, we could vote to have us wear masks until such time as we decide to rescind that. Um, but I would like to get other people's feedback on that, because that's just, I understand the concern, I mean, I still get nervous when I go to restaurants, so. Uh, how do other people feel? Yes, Commissioner Hukim?
Um, I appreciate this discussion greatly, and I completely support wearing masks. Um, as someone who still has a teenager that ha- is asthmatic, that is not fully vaccinated yet, thankfully in the age group that's going now, um, I definitely want to keep her protected too, and I think we have to look at that as well, of, you know, grandkids and things like that, that there are the youth that aren't vaccinated, and so I completely support wearing masks and socially distancing, not just, I mean, not just for her, but for all of us, I think it's just the right thing to do.
No, I think to keep us all safe, I, I think it's good, yeah. Um, does anybody else feel strongly the other way, or are we going to be comfortable? And we don't really have to make a decision right tonight, maybe at our next meeting, we could, we could put it as an item that we can vote on, but are, is, are the Commissioners comfortable?
Commissioner Thorson here, I am very comfortable meeting in person again, very happy to wear masks, I think it's a good idea in general, uh, because there's still a lot we don't know about the virus and different variations that might come along, so I think it makes sense whenever we are particularly indoors. Uh, I know I continue to wear my masks in places even that don't require them now, and certainly in, in the healthcare world, uh, where I work, I'm still wearing a mask all day long and a face shield and so forth, and that's because there's a lot we don't know about it. Um, it would be wonderful to have the option to, to join the meeting by video, I think I've heard almost everybody here at some point, uh, indicating that they'll be happy when we go to in-person meetings, and I will be as well, but we all have situations individual to us that make it, uh, that where at least occasionally, we might not be able to make it to a meeting. I for one will have some kind of a surgery sometime this summer, and will have some recovery time, and, uh, would, would love to be able to join the meetings if it's possible by video. So, um, again, supportive and excited to be meeting in person in some form in the future.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Thorson. Um, are there any other comments? I guess at this point, you know, it's something that we would have in a future, a future agenda item, to maybe formalize the mask request and the social, social distancing.
Chair Lewis?
Yes, Commissioner Olson?
Thank you. Um, uh, even before COVID, um, we did have opportunities, if somebody was out of town, to come into the meeting that way, so I, I'm not sure how the legislation discussion will go, that you, uh, referenced Shane being, uh, a city representative too, but, um, it seems to me that that past practice sets a precedent that would permit these kinds of things, uh, so I look forward to hearing about that.
Okay, yes, Administrator Coleman, um, have you heard anything about that? I mean, uh, could you, uh, reply, or do you have a response to Commissioner Olson's comment? Because it, it's a, um, a good, you know, valid comment, since it was something we were doing before COVID.
Absolutely, thank you, Chair Lewis and Commissioner Olson and Commissioners. I will have to follow up, um, with the onset of COVID, there has been different things that have been looked at, and different things and possibilities that have either presented themselves or possibly gone away. Um, so I will reach out to, uh, Mr. Ruddling, because it's also something that affects the Port Authority, um, Commission. So, uh, I will reach out and I will follow back up, um, probably by email, but then I would bring it forward as an item, because I think it's something that's really good, that needs to have discussion and input on, um, and for the public to, that anybody that watches to be able to have, to understand where that dialogue is coming from and what we're talking about. So I will follow up.
Yeah, no, thank you, Commissioner or Administrator Coleman, I think that's a really good idea, yeah, because, um, we will want to like formalize if we wear masks, so that would be a good opportunity to do that at that time as well. Um, so if there's-
Chair Lewis, I have one more question.
Yes, Commissioner Hukim?
Thank you very much, uh, Chair. Just one more, um, going on that remote thing, like what, just something more for you to follow up on, is if there's any specifics with relating to COVID, because just because people have been vaccinated, doesn't mean we can't get it, doesn't mean a family member can't get it, and we may not have symptoms and want to attend the meeting virtually, but we obviously are not going to want to, nor should we be going to a meeting in public. So just something to kind of piggyback off of, is if there's any exemptions regarding COVID protocols that way.
That's, good comment, that's, that's really good. So, one more thing to look into, Administrator Coleman. Okay, if there's no further discussion on this item, it wasn't information only, so I am going to move on to item 6.2, which is our Commissioner question and answer. And Commissioner Olson, I believe you had a question, and, uh, I think this, it now is the perfect opportunity to bring that question up.
Uh, thank you, there's actually two.
Oh, we'll let, we'll let you have two then.
Okay, thank you. Uh, bottom of page two, um, is, is a paragraph, it starts out, uh, Olson followed up by asking, and, um, and so that's the context of my question, and, um, uh, Administrator Coleman indicated that, uh, that it would be good to, or correct, I think is the word here, open dialogue with the City Council and the Planning Commission for clarity and concern. So just, uh, wondering how, uh, we proceed, uh, with that in terms of keeping it on the table and, until we have that happen.
Administrator Coleman?
Thank you.
On that?
Yes, and so this is referring to the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, and in June, staff has been, um, requested to come back to the City Council with, um, possible amendments or suggestions based on, um, based on the rollout of the previous amendments and where we are in the OHO. Um, what I highlighted was the concern, um, in these notes, in these minutes- in these notes, in these minutes, the concern that the Council, the HRA, and the Planning Commission all cited regarding open space. And so, we have not, to be perfectly honest, as staff, we briefly touched on it and put together the information that, as a request from the Council. But we have not followed back up as we've been working on a couple of development projects that are main, using the OHO. But as staff, and when I say staff, the managers of community development divisions have discussed how we can go about having a joint meeting. But at this point, the, the joint meeting would be between the HRA and the City Council, and what does that look like, and what do we discuss, and how does it run? Part of that is because the Port Authority has regular joint sessions with the City Council, more so around the bigger developments that they're doing, but it was also like, how do we better communicate and engage with our City Council? There has not been a discussion of a pin-down date around that, and so we are still looking what it would look like to engage with the Planning Commission, but so far I haven't seen where we would have just like all three together at one time. So I can get back to you about that, because staff was definitely discussing this, and we need to take it up for being on the calendar for City Council and the HRA. And it also is a lot easier to do combined meetings with, on Mondays. So that's also a consideration for our HRA Board, where I know you all have schedules and whatnot, we're usually the second and fourth Tuesday, that we would at least be looking at a Monday for the, a joint council meeting with the HRA, and then laying out topics around the OHO and other things that we've seen. I will also say that the OHO was rolled out kind of quickly, but not kind of quickly. It really engaged the public and our developers and really spoke with them, but internally, there is further discussion needed about how the OHO interacts with the various departments of the city. And what I mean by that is fire, traffic. It has been a very big focus on development and getting the affordable housing, which is great. However, what does that look like for environmental health that does our inspections and is our regulatory arm, you know, after it's been implemented? And so there are some opportunities for staff to come together internally to have a facilitated discussion around the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, what it is, and how it's impacting other divisions or departments in the city. So that is a very long answer. But basically, all the things are moving at once, and it's not forgotten, Commissioner Olson. We just want to internally get the project that we have moving forward, get it moved forward. Also get staff engaged and on board in like fire, traffic, public health, all the different divisions, and then also at the same time scheduling a joint meeting between, or possibly joint meetings, excuse me, between HRA and City Council, and what does that look like for the Planning Commission to engage with the HRA and or City Council?
Chair Lewis, if I could do a follow-up question and comment?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. Administrator Coleman, the context in the minutes is the OHO. And we've, we've had some other questions, particularly maybe in the last 10, 12 months or so, requesting or discussing the need for clarity of, of our role within the city relative to the City Council administration and perhaps Port Authority as well. So I'm, I'm just, the request is that that this not be only for OHO, but that it would be for other things and that that our, our HRA would, Board would end up having some opportunity to have discussions of issues that we would like being on agendas at some point. If it's an ongoing meeting session, in the sense that you talked about the Port Authority, whether similar or dissimilar. I'm, I'm, I guess advocating for us having communication on more than the OHO, if you could comment now or, or table it or whatever.
Thank you, Chair Lewis, Commissioner Olson. So, are you asking for what I, what I, what I heard was better coordination on decisions of projects, policies, and our actions that may include the HRA and City Council, but impact the HRA and or City Council. Is that correct?
Very much so. Well stated.
Okay, so with that, I will say, I will say a lot of that from my short time here, a lot of that comes down to the administrator for the HRA, and how the administrator engages and coordinates with the Community Development Director, which there has been quite a bit of turnover and transition for quite a while. How the, the administrator engages with the Community Development Director, who is on the executive leadership team, engaging with the city manager who is setting the schedule and bringing the information back to the City Council. So I say that to say that it's, it's both and. It is also looking for a place and a way to coordinate and communicate better between the HRA Board Commissioners and the City Council members, but also on staff. How we day-to-day interact, communicate, operate, and take action steps. So I hear you. I will have to follow back up on that, because there's a lot of, as I'm new, as our Community Development Director is new, there's a lot of what's this, how do we do that, happening right now? And understanding the need for, additional need for more coordination and or more communication.
Thank you. I appreciate your response and maybe it calls for at some point more discussion beyond what I've said. I think I, I tried to summarize the outcome of several discussions over the last 10, 12 months in particular. But certainly at some point would welcome, encourage other comments either now or when we get back to this.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Do any of the other commissioners have anything they would like to add? It, it sounds like Administrator Coleman has this in hand, and for me, I think it's something that, that we will need to look at again, probably not tonight. You know, any further this evening, but obviously something in the near future. Are there any other comments? Commissioner Olson, did you have a second question that you wanted to bring up, or was that included in your question?
No, that was a follow. The second one is about in the middle of page four of the minutes, just before item six is introduced. And that is motion at our last meeting to table item 5.2 of that meeting, and asking staff to present about the HRA request about different purchase op and options within 60 days. That, that context was in terms of when we were selling some, some property that we had available and wondered if it could be what, what the options might be. So just wondering, we're not far into the 60 days, but just wondering if we have a progress report on that topic.
Administrator Coleman, have we made, is, is that something that's being worked on now?
Thank you Chair Lewis, Commissioner Olson. It is being worked on now. To highlight, we do have a current relationship or current partnership with West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust. And so one of the things that, one of the tasks is to reach out to them to see about their capacity and availability in building a new home from the ground up, as that is already a current relationship. But they may not be able to do that at this time. Number two, previously, in other developments in the city, years before, years prior, Project for Pride and Living, PPL, has done work within the city. And number three, Habitat for Humanity, also assessing their ability, ability, availability, and capacity for building a ground from the, building a home from the ground up. The addition to that is looking at if the property is to be a partnership, this is just something to look at, the property is to be a partnership with one of those entities that provide for affordable home ownership options. What does that look like for the sale of the land? Is that a complete write-down? Is that having to provide additional gap, development gap or affordability gap assistance? And where would that come from? As well as, as it stands, the way that we sell our properties may not have a income limit for who purchases it, but it has a requirement for owner occupancy. And so it's still going for ownership. So those are all the things that have been discussed and looked at, but we will come back before the end of June to provide the information as requested.
All right. Because that, that was going to be my next question, was when you anticipated you know, you'd be able to present the information. So that's useful. Yes, Commissioner Olson?
Comment, I noticed, and I haven't actually read it yet, but the, the, the the current our news, local newspaper, I think on the 20th edition, had an article about Hennepin County Board approving 17.1 million for affordable housing projects. So I assume that, that we will take advantage of that to the extent that we can and look forward to us maybe having some discussion about that in the future, but just a comment. Thank you.
I, I can actually respond to that, Commissioner Olson. That is a competitive RFP process that the, that Hennepin County does annually. And I had actually already talked to Julia Welly-Airs at Hennepin County, who had, I know her previously, and she had just given me the rundown. That is very competitive, and I will say that when you see, usually when you see county providing for affordable housing, it's usually multifamily rental. Single-family ownership has been an opportunity through federal home dollars, which also are available at Hennepin County, but that is extremely competitive. And so if we have a site, such as this site that we own, and a developer with a penciled-out performer, ready to go, we would be able to apply for that type of funding.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that information. Yes, Commissioner Beloga?
Thank you, Chair. One of the things and that I would like to see discussed when we bring this topic back is, is the city owning the land and having a, a set of Declaration of Covenants that go with it, defining who can reside there that, you know, the, the next buyer will have agree in advance to sell it to maintain its affordability, you know, the, and I'm going to use the broad term, which is somewhat inappropriate, but you know, the normal kinds of conditions that you do for land trust property. And, and I think that Administrator Coleman is very steeped and familiar with these, and I see her smiling and nodding, so we're in good hands there. But that we can, you know, if if the West Hennepin Land Trust doesn't have the capability, that we then look at establishing relationships with developers to buy it and, and just build affordable houses on it. You know, so instead of a $450,000 house, we get a $300,000 house and, you know, $130,000 piece of land. So that's where the affordability can come into play. Is, is that, you know, you're still selling it to reduce the cost to the buyer. So I, I think that Administrator Coleman knows where I'm going, so I won't belabor the comments any further.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Beloga. It's a, a city-sponsored land trust in a sense, and so actually put this program together just when I left the city of Minneapolis. That I'll be perfectly honest, is still running into issues being approved by HUD. It's approved by the City Council, but it's running into a lot of issues of being approved by HUD, which is limiting the availability of funding that can be used. However, it is a city-sponsored land trust, which just basically means the city is maintaining ownership of the land and removing the cost of the land. And the city is also providing additional assistance to help with the development of an affordable housing or affordable homeownership opportunity, as well as a deed of covenants that says that the property must be sold to a person at or below 80% area median income, and the city must approve every resale. And so there, that is exactly where you're going, Commissioner Beloga. It's definitely something that is being looked at and used in a lot of different places across the country. And it is growing in its interest with the cost of housing and the limit on people's income.
Thank you so much for that.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner, or Administrator Coleman. Are there any other comments or questions this evening from the commissioners? All right, hearing none, I'm going to move to item seven, which is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the May 25th, 2021, HRA Commission meeting? Nobody wants to, okay, thank you, Commissioner Beloga. Do I hear a second?
Second, Huqueen.
Thank you, Commissioner Huqueen. It has, Commissioner Beloga has moved to adjourn the meeting seconded by Commissioner Huqueen. May I have the roll call votes?
Beloga?
Aye.
Huqueen?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion pass five to zero.
We are adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Yeah, I didn't think anybody wanted to lead when I asked for a motion. It was like silence. It's like, well, I guess we're here all night.